Welcome to all of us, the second board meeting. If we will please stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Moment of silence.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be seated. We would like to welcome tonight, Ms. Tammy Timbles, who is our new administrative assistant, deputy assistant clerk, certain clerk, city clerk. The first item on our agenda is to approval of the official agenda. Our judge, all of you have had opportunity to look at it.
Mayor, I have reviewed the agenda. I see there is one item that's been requested to be deleted, and I move that our--
I think that's on the consent agenda, isn't it?
Oh, excuse me, consent agenda. Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I move that our official agenda should be approved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second.
Oh, what item are you talking about?
No, that's on the consent agenda. It's on the consent.
It still needs--
Keep it on the table. Do we need to take it off now?
Yeah, we will need to take it off now.
All right, the item on the consent that should be removed is item 2, suppression for authorization for final pay of application for Georgia and Bryant Airport parking lot construction to Sam Oswald and Sons. That has been asked to be removed from the consent agenda.
Is that a removal from the consent agenda period or a movement to the regular agenda for discussion?
I think it's just a movement from the consent agenda period, you know, to be brought up in another board meeting.
That's why I just made the motion to approve the agenda since we're being placed on the official--
Mayor, board, excuse me, the airport board did not pass that particular item on their agenda last night, and we were putting it in there just in case they made-- they took action on it, and they did not, so we removed it from the consent agenda. To be taken up at a later date after the airport board approves it.
Okay. Along the lines, I have one item I would like to move from the consent agenda to the regular agenda for discussion.
Okay.
And that's item Roman numeral 3A1. 3A1.
And Mr. Lawrence says to request authorization to never pass the hiring of camps to help with the city clerk's office.
No, that is correct.
So you want that on the regular agenda?
That's what I said.
All right, and we will-- Okay, are there any other adjustments from the agenda to the regular? I believe we have a motion with a second then that we approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Our next item is the approval of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I would move the items on the consent agenda, except it's altered with the deletion and the movement to be approved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor of the consent items. The consent agenda to be approved, please say aye.
Aye.
It brings us down to the approval of the minutes. Do we have any corrections of the minutes of previous meetings?
A couple corrections, I'll--
Approve them, you could get with her after the meeting or first thing tomorrow or something to get them changed. Is there anyone else that has any changes?
I'll get with her tomorrow.
I will also.
Excellent. Do we now have a motion for approval of the minutes of July the 19th? Please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the minutes from July 19th will file a regular recess meeting to approve and necessary corrections.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
It passes. It brings us down to citizen involvement. Is there any-- is there anyone tonight that would like to take three minutes?
My name is Alvin Turner. We just-- citizens would just like to get an update on some of the things that was at the last meeting. One of them is Louisa in Wood Street. Friday would be the first day of school, and those buses were loaded and loud, and we've been wanting to ask it right there in Louisa in Wood Street. The railroad track that's back behind us, a lot of people are feared that if it's not taken care of, it might collapse, and we don't need that. And that is a concern of--
Would anyone like to say anything in regard to what he's talking about? If I may, the board's pleasure, I went up there with two different vehicles. I went up there with an SUV that sits you up extremely high to enter into that road there, and I had no problem seeing in a high-seated vehicle. And then I went up there with the city's car. It's a very old car that seats you very low, and I had no problems in seeing and entering either one of those, and I thought that we would wait for our planner guy here to see if we are in any violations there. So that's an ongoing situation, Mr. Turner, that we are-- we're not just neglecting that. Other substances? If you could state your name, Mr. Graves.
Mayor Kemp and members of the Board of Alderman. I am Larry Graves. I live at 108 Shadowwood Lane here in Starkville. I've been a resident of Starkville for better part of about forty years now, and in that time, I've seen a number of planning and zoning commissions moved through. I've dealt with them, both as a citizen individually and as president of homeowners association. For the past three and a half years, we have addressed the planning and zoning commission in defense of our neighborhood where a developer, a local developer, had plans to use our streets, our totally completed neighborhood streets, for his entrance and exit routes for a proposed multi-tenant development just to the north of us. We stated our case to the planning and zoning commission, the developer stated his, and the commission listened very carefully and fairly to both of us, and in the end, they honored the existing planning and zoning ordinances and ultimately preserved the property values and the safety of our neighborhood and the other neighborhoods in this city. And they didn't just hand the victory to us. We had to prove our case, and in doing so, they were very thorough. A couple of months ago, I had to come before the planning and zoning commission to get a sign variance for a sign that we wanted to put at the north end of Timmer Cove. We thought this would be very simple, thought that it'd just be like falling off of the law. Well, they thoroughly went over that, grilled me intensely with that, and in the end, they found a favorable for us, but what they wanted to know was, was it going to cause any safety hazards? Were we going to landscape that? And so, they were doing their job. They were doing it right. And what I've said all this to say is that of all these planning and zoning commissions that I've observed in my time here in Starkville, I think this is the most professional, thorough, and fair-operating planning and zoning commission that I have seen, and I have been in education by local government officials for over twenty-five years. So I understand that there's some imbalance on the planning and zoning commission in representation of various wards, but I also understand that there is a move afoot tonight to abolish this hard-working commission and then reconfigure it at a later date. You know, they don't get paid anything, and a lot of the citizens of this town will attest in fact of how well they have conducted themselves. To me, it is a hard slap in the face for somebody to be-- have their position abolished, in a sense, just fired for that, and so I would encourage you to find another way to correct those imbalances on the wards, and just don't throw the babies out with the bathwater.
Sure. Any other substances? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, I am Professor Harry Cole. I'm a professor of civil engineering at Mississippi State, a professional engineer, and I have been a resident of Starkville for thirty years. I wish to extend what Larry Graves has just said. I have watched the operations of the planning and zoning commission very carefully for several years, but particularly over the last three years. They do, in fact, do a very professional job and have looked out for the interest of the citizens of Starkville when the interests of the citizens have been challenged by special interests. It's my perception that any attempt to abolish, or the attempt to abolish the planning and zoning commission is an attempt to get rid of a board that has brought forward many reforms over the last three years that have been in the interest of all the citizens of Starkville. It's an attempt to get around those reforms or to abolish those reforms and put in a board that is not willing to pursue those reforms. One of the reforms has been this proposed planning document. Took eighteen months to produce, and it was very actionable. I'm concerned that this attempt is an attempt to, by special interest groups, to take over the control of the planning and zoning function of the city. We don't need that. The board should be independent, and it should continue doing the independent and unbiased job that it has. I fully support the current board and appeal to you as aldermen to do the right thing and leave that board intact. If you feel like there's unequal representation, then add to that board and do not abolish it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Just ma'am.
My name is Eileen Vanderwell. I'm also an officer in Timmer Cove homeowners. As a resident of Starkville, they were both giving their years combined. As a student, I came here and stayed twelve years. I liked it so much, I've been back for ten years. I concur with everything President Graves said. I also would like to thank the current commission for their work. I haven't always agreed with them, as all of you have, but I've never once been in a meeting, and I've been to just about every one the past three years, where I ever saw them make a decision based on personal feelings. It was always backed up with either state law, policy, current zoning regulations. There were many, many times before a vote was taken, where someone would even ask, wait just a minute, we've got to tell me what we're basing this acceptance and non-acceptance of this proposal on, and I commend that. As a state auditor, I have to make many decisions that I don't personally agree with, but I have to audit based on state law, so I certainly understand that. I respect your job. You have a very hard job. I realize you're going to put the people in there you think are the best, and I will respect your decision. I do ask you if you, when you make your decision, whether you have a total current board, a total new board, or a mix of the present members in you, that you remember one thing, that this group has raised the bar very, very high on the planning and zoning commission. We don't want to lower the bar. I don't think any of us at Stark-- we're all Starkville citizens. We're all in this together, no matter if you're a developer, a homeowner, an apartment owner. We're all in this together, and we want to continue to raise the bar high on our planning and zoning goals for Starkville. And also, I hope, Mr. Mayor, I have respect for your position, and I believe you to be a man of honor who will honor your commitment in your letter to the Timmer Cove residents, your campaign letter, where it stated, "If elected mayor, you will see a new focus and a greater emphasis on the importance of neighborhoods as we move together to improve the quality of life in Starkville." And we ask that you would all honor that commitment.
Anyone else?
I'm Susan Savage. I live in Colonial Circle. I also would like to address you on the concerns I have for anything that you have to do with the zoning, planning and zoning commission, other than to give them a very public thank you for all the service that they have done and are continuing to do for this city. I find it absolutely amazing, one, that they don't even get paid. This is total volunteer work, and then to have things that against them in any way I find shocking. I don't know anyone in the city of Starkville that knows the laws and ordinances any better than these members. I've gone to several different times, and I've asked them a question about one, and they can pop off exactly what the ordinance is. I don't think you're going to find that just anywhere. I find it amazing that we would even think of changing the comprehensive plan, changing anything about the planning and zoning commission after they've worked this hard on the comprehensive plan, and that if you change it right now, you're telling them and the city of Starkville, it really gets them mad. I find it amazing, absolutely shocking, that you would think of abolishing this commission and then asking them to re-put their names in the pot to be put back on any kind of commission at a later date. I think that is an insult. I cannot imagine how that must feel. I understand that some of the wards may not have numerical representation from it, but I would really, really challenge you. They may not have numbers, but I don't know anyone on that board, anyone on that commission that is not representing Starkville in their heart of hearts. Every one of them works for free for Starkville. I thank each one of you for running for office. I cannot imagine the stuff you must hear from both sides, so I thank you for that, and I think it is a challenge. I plead with you in the end to really think about the message that you're sending to the current members of the planning and zoning commission and the future members, and I thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else that would like to speak up to three minutes?
Gentlemen and ladies, I'm Dr. Leroy Howell. I've been a citizen here since, I'm pretty sorry, I've heard the practice of medicine here, so I'm a familiar in regard to the changing of the re-up orders. I beg the place, and it says that y'all have a mandate that says your term is going to expire, and you're going to have to go to court if you do not do something about this. Sometimes we have to inconvenience ourselves. We have to inconvenience other people for the good of community as a whole, for their public health, the safety, and of moral purpose. Sometimes you have to take a stand, and sometimes you do have to go to court. Better go to court for a good cause, as good to your citizens, than have to go to court for someone else. So I'm just asking y'all to be careful in your deliberation about this, go down traditionally to the community. And realize that this could make a lot of difference in how it's going to end. And y'all know the ways it could probably take. People have to buy a six-pack, load beer, sit in the car, which you've got to do it. You've got to throw all the way home, get going to your living room, open, start renting, you've got to pop it open, as it says there. Open container is going to be one of the biggest, biggest things as far as oil and fuel consumption, we're going to save for the next, if we want to shut down. Everybody seemed to get along pretty good with the board. I think maybe a little bit of greed and part of the people selling this stuff, but everybody else seemed to be very well paid with it, because there were people that said that they were going to drive out to Highway 45 to buy beer, so you probably, if it gets cold, have to put it in the head of your body. But then, I'm just asking you to consider this issue very closely, and that's my feeling there.
Anyone else? This brings us down to board business. First thing on the agenda of the board business is consideration of election commissioners, and I have letters from five people. I think all of you have letters from five people in your package, and we only have five people applying for the position, and we need five positions filled.
Mayor, I have a question relative to that. There are five spots, five terms expire. Who on the current election commission did not see re-up?
Everyone sought re-up, except for Miss Katie Chandler, who resigned to take the position in the city clerk's office. And I saw my colleague, I'm with five, submitted an application, I'm actually saying.
I'm trying to figure out who--
Yes, sir.
But it's Katie Chandler.
Yes, sir.
So do you-- do you have a-- is it the wish of the board to sit here and listen to each one of these people?
I think we know all of the people. I would move that all five applicants to the municipal election commission be appointed for the appropriate term.
Is that term run concurrently with this mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a motion and a second that all five applicants, that is Virgin Bowlin, James McHale, Lady Thomas, Rosenhand, Rosenhon, and Clyde Williams. We have a motion with a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes. That brings us down to park commission, and we had one applicant for that. Ms. Dorothy Isaac, she's-- her term expires, and she's asking to be re-approved.
Mr. Mayor, I move that this daughter may be reappointed to serve as a member of Starkville Park Commission, forty-five year term. We'll set term ending on June 30, 2010.
We have a motion with a second that Ms. Isaac be re-affirmed for the park commission. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Airport board, we have a resignation. We do not have anyone who is seeking re-up on the airport board at this time. That brings us down to the board of adjustment and appeals, and I think we have one applicant.
Ms. Debbie Derriman, may I let you backtrack on that a second? Was the airport board position advertised? I do not remember from the ad, or has it not been advertised yet?
It has been advertised.
It was advertised in the list, and we got no written application. So I assume we will continue the advertisement to seek us on.
Okay. Okay, very good. This brings us down to the last appointment for the night would be for the board of adjustment and appeals. There's one position in which it's been vacated by Jack Carter, and I think we only have one person who has applied for that, Ms. Debbie Derriman. Are you here? Would you like to come up to the front, please? Ms. Derriman, how are you tonight? That we'll start off by letting-- we have kind of a huge situation here that the comprehensive plan that so many people have spoken of tonight totally eliminates this board of adjustments and appeals. So we're in kind of a catcher twenty-two here, I suppose, that if we appoint you, you may not be there very long. And the last time I was on that board, it only met one time in two years, so it's not one of these things that meets on a frequent basis, but I think that we need to go ahead and fill this position, and that we have not dissolved it as of yet. But I just want to forewarn you of something that you're applying for may not be in existence six months from now. And we'll start with a questioning at the far end, Mr. Perkins.
I have an honor, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cox?
Mr. McLaurin? It's my pleasure to welcome you, Debbie, to the meeting tonight. I have known Ms. Derriman for over this whole year, as we care to enumerate. She is interested in our community. She shares many of the same values that we have relative to construction and quality and all these types of things, and I think she would be a good addition to this board of adjustments and appeals, no matter how short that service might be.
Mr. Mills? Mr. Corr? Mrs. Sale?
Where do you live, Mr.? Highway twenty-five. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, then it's my pleasure to move that Ms. Derriman be appointed to board of adjustments and appeals for an undetermined term committing on the outcome of the adoption of the comprehensive plan.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. You are our newest appointee. This brings us down to discussion and possible action regarding this proposed ordinance for altering the composition and term length of membership of the planning and zoning commission. We tonight have listened to three minute public appeals in regard to this. I think the main issue that we have at this particular point is that with the redistricting, we have approximately four wards that are not represented on the planning and zoning board. I'll open this thing up for discussion at this time. I'll open this thing up for discussion at this time. Mr. Perkins?
Yes, sir. Thank you, humble mayor. I would like to say that I do concur with the mayor's comments. At this time, there are four wards, specifically Wards Two, Four, Six, and Seven, that does not have any representation on the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is very imperative and important that each ward have a representation on the Planning and Zoning Commission, just like this Board of Aldermen. There is one alderman from each ward, and that gives each ward with inactive voice and active input in city government. Our current Planning and Zoning Ordinance requires that there shall be at least one member from each ward, and again, that leaves only three ward that represents our entire commission. The ordinance goes on to say that no more than two members shall be from any one ward. To my knowledge and understanding, at this time, I think I can call it that Ward One may have three members on the commission, and Ward Three now has at least three members. It is very incumbent on this board to take some action to adjust the ordinance that pertains to the Planning and Zoning Commission, to ensure that we have fair, proper, balanced representation on this commission. I am of the opinion that we perhaps should take some input and discussion from our chief administrator officer and from our city planner on his arrival, and perhaps the two of them can tender to us a proposed ordinance that accommodates the comments from the mayor, myself, and perhaps others, that we can at least take up for consideration at our first meeting in September, which will be September sixty-two double five. Our planner is scheduled, from what I understand, to arrive the latter part of August, maybe August twenty, twenty-first, thereabout, give or dare, two. And we can get his opinion. It's my understanding that the planner will have an integral role regarding the building and the planning of parks. So yes, we do not need to leave the ordinance as is. I am not in favor of seeing a commission that has more than... I would prefer seven, but I certainly do not want to see one more than nine. I remember when I was in the District Board of Nursing for twelve years, and for some length of time, there were thirteen members. And we were glad when the legislature amended the law so the board can hear the case, and the hearing panels are threes as opposed to thirteen, because with the thirteen distinguished members that we had, all of them had very pertinent and relevant questions, so you can imagine that the deliberation, the proceedings went on and on and on. So I'm actually in favor of one member from each ward, but certainly not more than a total of nine members. I am not in favor of, Mr. Mayor, of just waiting to fill... I'm not in favor of wanting to provide representation for the wards that lack representation by attrition, because it would take too long to get representation for those wards. I would like to see us take action at the first meeting in September by adopting some ordinance that would ensure at least one member from each ward in our city. Now, you have the floor, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cox, you have any comments?
Does it make sense at this time to discuss the proposed ordinance that was put in our package?
Probably not.
Well, my comments are relative to the proposed ordinance that was proposed for this evening, which would have altered the composition and the term lengths of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I would have voted against it if it was brought up this evening. This issue, in some sense, has already been settled. The city attorney gave us an opinion, which I'll read from, which says the membership of the Planning Commission for each member was for a specific term of office, and so long as the appointee remains a qualified elector of the city of Starkville, then it appears he or she remains qualified to complete the term of office despite, excuse me, a change in ward lines. So any effort or move on our part to remove these members because of, in essence, our decision to change the ward lines would appear to be false. There's also additional concerns as it relates to the comprehensive plan. If we ask for all new members, my concern is the implementation of that comprehensive plan would be delayed indefinitely, and it's too important for that to happen. I also am concerned that any change to this commission, in a sense, would be needless, because in fact, ten months from now, on June thirtieth, two thousand and six, three of the members, their terms will expire. They are from the wards that are in question, that are, in a sense, overrepresented by this recent ward change. So this problem in itself takes care of itself, and I'm most concerned about those kind of voting issues. And if we decide to postpone this, then we want to make sure that whatever changes or concerns that we're considering, we make it very clear that these members are indeed qualified to complete their term of office, and we shouldn't question that going forward.
Mr. Mayor, let me just say one little thing. Just want to clarify one thing to Alderman Cox, that'd be clear for the record. The opinion that he read was given to us by our former city attorney, Alderman Perkins, about the Planning and Zoning Commission. That statement was just merely a directory. She said that one way to achieve the goal that we want to... She basically advised us that's what we have to do to achieve. I just want to make sure that was clear, and that was only part of the letter he read. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McLaurin, I'm sure you've got a statement on this.
I certainly, Mr. Mayor, have a number of comments, if the audience and the board will indulge me. I had noticed the comments from a number of citizens concerning the current membership on the Planning and Zoning Commission, their opinion that this group is a professional group that is given highly of its time, volunteer efforts, no compensation, long hours, nights, worry, agonizing contact from citizens of all sorts. It has been my experience also, having watched the group, the Planning and Zoning Commission, as it has evolved over some forty years, that we have at the present time, in my opinion, the best single Planning and Zoning Commission that we have ever had, one that is sincerely interested in the quality of development in our community, the protection of neighborhoods, curb appeal, how this city looks. The list goes on and on and on. I thank my colleague from Ward Six for his delineation of the current ordinance as it relates to the makeup and so forth of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and agree with most everything that he said. My colleague Alderman Cox has further clarified that, particularly in terms of some points he had planned to make on the consideration of the proposed ordinance, changing the Planning and Zoning Commission, which was on the agenda for consideration for tonight. I think I would like to take all of this a step further. The Planning and Zoning Commission presently has the membership that Alderman Perkins delineated. We have one member who has moved of his own accord out of the ward that he represents. I am of the opinion that his vacation of his residence in the ward from which he was appointed, specifically appointed, vacates that particular seat. I think thus that a representative of Ward Two, Alderman Mills, could be chosen and appointed to replace the person that has, by moving from Ward Two, vacated his seat. I would not like to see any change in the existing membership of the Planning and Zoning Commission because, for the reasons previously stated, but in addition, the extensive work that they have done on the comprehensive plan, and we look toward its implementation. Since the newspaper article on Friday connected to beer and the subsequent articles today about the agenda or yesterday and today about agenda items, I have received some thirty-two contacts. Interestingly enough, I received more contacts about the Planning and Zoning Commission matter than I received about beer, though the total is pretty close, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. I would take this all a step further. We need to recognize the valuable contribution that existing members of the Planning and Zoning Commission have made to this community. We do not need to remove any of them shorter periods of time than the end of their term, their normal rotation. While I understand a larger group can be somewhat unwieldy, sometimes you have to have a larger group to do what you want to do. For example, some people would say a board of Aldermen of seven members is somewhat unwieldy. Remember, it ran from five to seven once we crossed the magic ten thousand population figure and for no other reason. Some say that was too more, too many, perhaps. But the point is that I think the existing membership should continue, and I agree fully that all wards not represented should be represented. So I would propose, and in fact, I move, that the city attorney be directed to draft an amendment to the existing Planning and Zoning Commission ordinance, which increases the membership by three individuals to allow Wards Four, Six, and Seven to have representation, and would encourage my colleagues from those wards to be thinking about a person they would like to propose for membership on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And as an aside, that Ward Two, Alderman Mills, the seat be declared vacant because the person has voluntarily moved from the ward, and thus Alderman Mills, that you be thinking about a good, appropriate person for placement as the representative of Ward Two. So thus that the membership would be increased by three members. That goes from nine to twelve. That's an eleven-member committee with the chairman voting only in case of a tie, so there is the opportunity for majorities to prevail. It, of course, simply means that a quorum of the committee is five individuals that can conduct planning and zoning business for the city. So that the group be increased by that number of people, that the wards not represented be prepared as soon as is practical to, and hopefully the next meeting, to propose a member for representation of their wards. How will this ultimately change? As Alderman Cox has pointed out, within the short span, and by city time, it is a short span, of ten months, three people will roll off the commission. Thus, we will be back to the original nine. Those three that roll off create no other anomalies on the commission, because as luck would have it, they roll off from the proper ward. And, Mr. Mayor, I make all that in the form of a motion.
I sure hope we don't have to repeat that.
Before we get a second, if there is one, I'd like to give deference to my colleagues from Two, Seven, and Hope One, to see what they have to say, if Mr. McLaurin doesn't mind. Three Aldermen have spoken on the issue, and at least I think it'd be great to give deference to hear what the other four had to say before we entertain any motion or second and a discussion. That's just my preference, so it's just the call of the chair.
Well, you know, late motion. We can have discussion.
Do we have a second? McLaurin's motion?
Sir.
We have a motion with a second. We'll continue our discussion before we vote on it. Mr. Mills, do you have any comments?
Yes. I took it on myself yesterday to make around through the lone metal subdivision, and this is probably not something that every Alderman has the occasion to do, but me being retired, I had time, and I went randomly from door to door and knocked on fifteen doors. And I had several items that I brought to these people's attention. And the Planning and Zoning Commission was an item that the people in my ward were very much concerned about insulting the current members. They thought it was a bad thing to ask the current members to resign and reapply. And by going to the house that I went to, I'm thoroughly convinced that the mode of the people in Ward Two is to work out some conditions for the Planning and Zoning Commission with the present members that we have at this time. I would be uneasy about voting anything other than the way that the people in Ward Two has indicated they'd like for the commission to be on.
Mr. Corr?
As elected official for Ward Four, my primary concern is to see that that representation extends to the Planning and Zoning Board through another constituent within Ward Four. So as long as we can reach an agreement that will allow Ward Four and really the other wards to be represented, I would have no issue with that.
Michelle?
I, too, would like to see representation from Ward Seven. After having listened to Alderman Perkins, Cox, and McLaurin, who could have much more to say, except you want representation? But I would like to follow that with, being a former member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I am a little insulted at the fact that nobody prior to these commissioners had done anything. So I do find that a little insulting, Alderman McLaurin. Thank you.
You all say anything, Stottler?
Just a couple of points. Most of it has been said very eloquently, but let me talk about the motion a little bit that Alderman McLaurin made specifically. I'd like to make sure that we keep the six-year terms for these commissioners that are staggered, just like they are now, reason being that that allows for their terms to be longer than board terms, and it removes some element of politics from their appointment, because, you know, with the staggered terms, no one board's going to appoint the majority. No one board of Aldermen will appoint the majority of Planning and Zoning Commissions. And, you know, I think this is a way we can address the representation as well as address the institutional memory issue and not just turning everyone out. With that, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, just a few final comments prior to your taking a vote on this matter. The motion is offered, I'm assuming, probably for Ward Three, just in effort to provide representation for the wards that are without representation, that's the thing. We have a professional planner coming aboard in at least two to three weeks, whom I have a very high opinion of. Mr. Rommel served back in nineteen eighty or nineteen ninety-nine, and he did a very outstanding job for the city of Starkville, in that we have hired Mr. Rommel as our city planner. I certainly would like to take the opportunity to give deference to his opinion on this matter, and I would also like to receive his expert opinion as to how we should proceed forward with this matter. Mr. Rommel may have experienced some prior situations, situations or circumstances similar to the city of Starkville that would be very valuable information. With that being said, Mr. Mayor, and given all due respect to the intent of the motion offered by my Ward Three colleague, I must respectfully dissent from this motion, because I would like to hear from our planner and our chief administrator officer at a later meeting. meeting. Now, there have been comments about dissolving this commission. There is no motion that is pending before this body at this time that attempts to dissolve this Planning and Zoning Commission. Anything that is contained in our board package for tonight's meeting is merely just for informational purposes. We only can dissolve a commission of board through official action by this body, and there is nothing that is pending before us. And I've learned from experiences and been at this table over on my thirteenth year's best to take a good, close look at these matters before we take something very tastefully. Of course, I respect my colleague from Ward Three on this matter, but at the same time, we'll have a planner that's coming in in just a few weeks, and so I would just say let's defeat this motion respectfully, and our planner will have an opportunity to get here, address this matter, he can give us his expert opinion and advice on this matter, and we can make the best informed decision at this time. So whoever is to wield this board, I'm going to be continued, as always, but I just thought I would just share those words of wisdom with my distinguished colleagues. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Alderman Perkins. We have a motion that has been seconded, and I think all of you have heard what Mr. McLaurin said, and I'm not about to repeat it, and I certainly hope that all of you remembered it. No, I don't want you to. You go on. No, no. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. All those opposed to this motion, please raise your hand. Two, five, two. This brings us, it passes, this brings us down to the discussion in regard to changes in the municipal polling places for Wards Six and Seven. I think it presented a large bottleneck for last election.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be very brief. I request for that matter to be on the agenda. The reason that I put it on the agenda, and I mentioned to my distinguished colleague, Alderman Jeanette Self from Ward Seven, at the last election, Ward Six and Seven voted at Board Town. That was our first time voting there, and so was our first time here in Ward Seven. And our city clerk, Mr. Young, and Mr. McLaurin is well aware of the problems associated with parking. It was very congested, parking was hectic, there was no, basically, place to turn around, hardly get access. The inside of the polling place was confusing with the limited space with two wards there. What I put this matter on the agenda for our consulting colleague from Ward Seven is to just apprise the board of this information so we can move forward. We're perhaps looking at two other potential individual sites for Ward Six and Seven. And I looked at place Ward Seven, and myself can speak to, I put the place Ward Six, myself can speak to Ward Seven, and what we just wanted to do is make the board aware of this information, so we can proceed. We're trying to get approval from these two places, and then once we get approval from Ward Six and the change for Ward Seven, we can come back and have an official public hearing, and then the board can take official action and submit it to Justice Department for approval. Specifically, it's hard to find a polling place for Ward Six, but I looked at the Mount Pea Missionary Baptist Church on North Jackson Street. This is Ward Six. It has sufficient parking, handicap accessibility, sufficient polling place. All these scenarios would be eliminated. The Justice Department has indicated to us that it does not matter with the polling place being a church. The only thing the Justice Department is going to want to have for approval is the distance between the proposed polling place and the existing polling place. We want to know why there's a change, will there be handicap accessibility, and we will submit that to Justice. So we just want the board to be aware of that, and hopefully the board will give, and if no one has any objection, we would like to proceed. We're trying to get approval for the proposed municipal polling places for Ward Six, and we know the next municipal election won't come to for the alderman, so two double or nine, but it may, it'll be potentially some other matters to be voted upon by the municipal voters. And I'll yield the floor, if I may, Mr. Mayor, to my distinguished colleague from Ward Seven to address the Ward Seven proposed polling place.
Mayor, Count, and Board, I have talked with Circuit Clerk Angie McGinnis, and she agrees that the county justice complex would be an ideal place for the polling place, not just for Ward Seven, but that the county would be also using it. So I am waiting for final approval from the Board of Supervisors that Ward Seven voting be changed to the justice, county justice complex.
Mr. Mayor and Board, I fully support the comments from my colleagues from Ward Six and Seven relative to polling place changes. I personally have no preference whatsoever as to which polling place should be, the one for Ward Six and which one for Ward Seven. I yield to their knowledge and discretion about movements within their ward as to what might be the best location. Whatever is recommended is fine with me. My only concern, as it is for all citizens in all of the wards, is that the polling place be accessible to the general citizenry, accessible to the handicapped, accessible to those with other difficulties, sufficient room in which to vote and maneuver within the structure, sufficient parking, all those things that we want, and whatever locations are suggested would be fine with me. Alderman Perkins said he was bringing this up just to make the board aware of this and that we do need to move forward. I would like to simply go ahead and move forward with this in the following fashion. Last term, there was a reapportionment and annexation committee in operation, which was charged with the responsibility of reapportionment of wards determining the polling places so forth. And Alderman Perkins, you will recall, it was Alderman Perkins that suggested the polling place be used for Ward Six and Seven at that particular time. I have a sense that we have some untidy business also connected with the municipal boundaries of the city, parts of the bypass in the city, parts of it outside the city. Since we are talking about preparing a submission to Justice, to the Justice Department in Washington, relative to voting, this would be a good time to take a look at anything else, if anything, that needs tidying up, so it can all go as a package and go as one package and not one package followed by shortly by another package, because if you've ever done one of these submissions to Justice, it's no small endeavor. So I would move that the city reconstitute the apportionment and annexation committee, composed essentially of the membership that occurred last time. This would be Alderman Perkins. Last time, it was Alderman Beck to in effect represent, quote, "the students." I would recommend that Alderman Corey be added for that particular purpose. I was on the committee, served as chairman, would be willing to chair the committee again. The mayor and the city attorney were ex officio members. I would add them as ex officio members, and would also add as an ex officio member the chief administrative officer. And so I would move reconstitution of the committee, so we can move forward with not only the Ward Six and Seven polling places, but any other business connected to the matter of elections, apportionment boundaries, and so forth that might be required to go to Justice.
Mr. Mayor, I want to second the motion. I wish we could, you know, some way we could get our colleague from Ward Seven on there since she's on the committee, since she has a matter that pertains to this overall committee process, but in our position, I have more than three aldermen on the committee, so Alderman has named three aldermen, but I was hoping that we began Alderman's, Alderman himself on the committee for purposes of her concern with Ward Seven. Not that the committee cannot address that, but I thought it would just be protocol to put her on the committee, but if the board wants to proceed with the current members, that would be fine.
Do you want to say something?
Yes, I do. I don't have a problem with not being on the committee, because as a representative for Ward Seven, I have already started the groundwork in doing what I felt that I needed to do, since it was concerning Ward Seven, and I have already spoken with Ms. McGinnis, and waiting approval from the Board of Supervisors. I know that the place will be adequate parking, handicap accessible, so I've done all of this, so it's not insulting to me not to be on the committee. Go ahead. Thank you.
And in response to that, it will, of course, be my pleasure to support and promote any polling place location that Ms. Self would wish to recommend, and we will look forward to her completion of her project and her recommendation to this committee.
Any other discussion? We have a motion. Do we have a second? Who's seconding that?
I do.
I think everybody's familiar with the content of the motion. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Looks like we have a seven and oh vote. Very good, that passes.
And, Mr. Mayor, I want to, Mr. McLaurin, just to make sure, you or administrative assistants know that I was asking for media plans, we said, and so make sure that four next to us here, certain, that four make of all our comebacks.
Aren't those branches now discussing action regarding the changes to the city's beer ordinance?
Mayor, if I may address this.
You may.
Mayor and Board, you should have each received in your packets a resolution, the title of which states resolution to authorize the city of Starkville to petition the alcoholic beverage control division of the state tax commission to allow the sale of cold beer or light wine within the municipal boundaries of the city of Starkville for off- versus consumption. Simply put, this ordinance will allow the sale of cold beer and wine, light wine, within the city of Starkville, and I would like to move that we pass this resolution as ordered.
Y'all heard the motion? Do we have a second to that motion?
This is for the resolution right now?
Yes.
Okay, I second it.
Any discussion of the motion and the resolution?
Oh, Mr. Mayor and Board, among those thirty-two or so contacts that I had relative to Planning and Zoning and to beer, eleven of them pertain to beer from residents of Ward Three, by a vote just to relate, and I consider this as scientific as the Starkville Daily News's poll, which chose to take two-thirds of a whole front page with a headline, "Starkville Daily News Poll Supports the Thing," and then you read on carefully further, and you find we had sixty-two people or some such responding, and we don't even know if there were sixty-two different people. Control is a little loose. About eleven were eleven different individuals. It seems to me that one of the main purposes of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen is to do things that are good for this city, things that improve the quality of life in the city. I have given lots of consideration to this proposal for, as people like to say, cold beer, a little bit misleading in that you can already buy cold beer in Starkville at any of the restaurants and so forth. What, of course, we're talking about is beer being sold cold in convenience stores or grocery stores. A lot of thought to this particular matter, since I was in, at the beginning, on the drafting of the original beer ordinance that Starkville had, failed two times, third time was the charm by some measure, but the ordinance was very carefully drafted to secure approval by the citizens of our community. Over the weekend, I have also been visited by two of the individuals that would, that are presently selling items in convenience stores, as well as another individual connected to the business. My basic point was I thought we were here to do things that are good and positive for the city. I'm still having difficulty coming up with really one positive thing that this would do for the city. To review and review very, very briefly here, it seems to me that this particular item could contribute to all sorts of safety issues. Dr. Howell talked about buying the six-pack, and are you ready to wait until you get home before you pop the top, and all that type of thing. I think there's very definite safety issues in that, I think there will be an increase in just the drinking and driving, if you want to put it as simply as that. I think there is potential for increase in litter. What are you going to do with the can after you finish it? Please stay out of Ward Three if you're going to throw it away, throw it someplace else.
They won't get out of Ward Four.
Probably not. The, some years ago, when this came up as a topic, the convenience store owners and operators were polled to specifically determine if they had an interest in this. At that time, and I do not have any current poll, of course, they were not interested simply because, as you would suspect, of the increased cost that would be necessary for refrigeration, or perhaps the renovation of stores. It's not just as easy to pull all the Diet Pepsi down and stock that with Coors Light and so forth. Lots of things are involved here, and they, quite frankly, did not want to make the, to incur the expense of doing this, because they said profits from increased sale of beer would be many, 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 many years before they would recover the cost of those things necessary for the stores to recover from that particular cost. I don't think there would be any increased beer sales that would bring additional revenue to the city. You sell what you sell, and that's about what you're going to sell. I have looked with some amusement at students on campus. The chilling of beer from its warm state has become not only a scientific form, but an art form. I sit in amazement to listen to the ways that beer is chilled from the initial warm state. I just have difficulty seeing any positive thing from a change in the current ordinance. And with that, I will yield comments to any others retaining the option of commenting again.
Does anyone else have any comments? Please don't make it as long.
Certainly, I'd like to address some of Mr. McLaurin's concerns. I certainly respect him for making those concerns and bringing this out into the public so that we can discuss and address them. I can speak from what I've heard, and that is that many, many, many students drive to West Point and Columbus for the sole purpose of being able to buy beer already cold, so they will not have to refrigerate it. If the concern is over health issues of students driving with cold beer in their hands, it would be arguably more in favor of students getting home safely, to not have to drive thirty, forty miles with which to purchase that beer. In addition, that beer being purchased in West Point and in Columbus does not benefit the city of Starkville through sales taxes that are applied to that. You also have concerns over the beer that arrives already cold, is then has, then gets hot in the stores, and then it has to get cold again, and the fact that it spoils a lot quicker that way, which in turn reduces the shelf life of it. And also, simply the fact that many, many, many people have asked for this and want to see this happen, and as a representative for the people we work for, I feel obligated to make sure that that, those concerns are addressed and brought before this board.
Thank you. Any other person would like to say something?
Mr. Faber, if you had an opportunity to take a look at the ordinance and also to compare the state law as it relates to this and give any recommendations?
The ordinance, they passed?
The one that? Well, I'll say that the prior ordinance, how that it might fit or not fit with state regulations and how the current ordinance that is being proposed tonight.
Well, as you are aware, there's been prior opinions that are already been given on this circuit, prior opinions. And I've reviewed the state statutes relative to this, and I've reviewed the prior ordinance, and I, at the request of the Board, have prepared a post-ordinance in case it was to be passed tonight. And my feeling is that the prohibition of sale of cold beer is not justified. And I agree with prior opinions of council because unless we can state some strong justification on the grounds of public health and safety, then I think for the competent jurisdiction, redeeming that decision would be arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable. And so therefore, I concur with the opinions of prior council on this regarding the prohibition of sale of cold beer.
Mr. Bril, have y'all had an opportunity from a city standpoint to evaluate if we were to adopt this new ordinance tonight? How this might affect our city and y'all kind of, and I know that the police chief isn't here tonight, but perhaps had an opportunity to talk to him around some of the concerns that have been expressed around driving under the influence, other type of issues like that?
I mentioned to him before he left and asked him if he had input to provide, and he said, "Not necessarily so, nothing that would be revealing beyond what we already know about drinking and driving and the capability of students and others to do it, but that this would not necessarily enhance that problem." So if Assistant Chief is how I was somewhere, anything you'd like to add, sir?
And do I understand correctly that if we were to pass this ordinance tonight, when would it go into effect? I think it's about thirty days.
It would be thirty days. And the resolution that is before you is a resolution to ask, to have the mayor write a letter to ask the organization of the tax commission to approve it. We don't agree with it.
Just one further point of clarification, so if you have this understanding, colleague from Ward, I have asked the exact date of the effectiveness of the ordinance. I want, you said thirty, I want to be clear, it's at thirty days from passage and publication.
Correct.
So in other words, it would be thirty days after it is published in the Starkville news.
Correct.
Yes.
It has to be published for thirty days before it's approved.
Yes.
I guess I was going, if I understood correctly, that it would take that thirty-day time period. It sounds like we might have the opportunity to put together a plan around education and enforcement that we may want to address at some point.
Well, you got thirty days before it goes to effect, so.
Right.
And if this, if the ordinance is approved tonight, I've already made arrangements with the city clerk. She has it emailed to her, she can email it to the city paper tomorrow. She has it in her email right now.
Oh, Mr. Mayor and Board, a couple of other comments based on things that have been said in the latter stages of this discussion. First, some comments on what Mr. Faber said, and I hope you were listening very carefully to what he said. This is one of the grayest areas of the alcohol control law that exists in the particular document as adopted by the state legislature. Yes, indeed, there is an attorney general's opinion which says that municipalities do not have the authority to regulate the temperature of their sales. One must be very careful to understand the import of an attorney general's opinion. And while under most normal circumstances, I support those types of opinions fully and completely. However, when the statute, the legislation passed by the legislation is very broad and very vague, it says to me that while this is an opinion, this is one lawyer's opinion. There would be other lawyers' opinion. There is no resolution of the matter until the proper court, and in our case, Mississippi Supreme Court, makes a final determination of what the law is. The Starkville law has been in existence for quite a long time. If there were a need to change it because of fear of a lawsuit, it looks like over this twenty-some-odd years, it would have been changed. It stood the test of time fine as a lawsuit hazard is concerned. Mr. Faber said, and if you heard his wording very carefully, that unless the city could show a need for health, safety, welfare reasons why it could be prohibited for sale of cold beer, then there might be a problem. The city, of course, if it wanted to, could show a multitude of different reasons related to health, safety, welfare of the community as a justification. I read in the paper this morning a letter from, from someone who talked about the situation in Hattiesburg, and you could do it there, and in Oxford, you could do it there. Of course, that is inaccurate in that Oxford does not allow the sale of beer cold in convenience stores. And like Starkville has gotten long fined for all of these years. So my point simply is that the law is fuzzy and the law is gray. Until a court rules, it's not really settled on this particular matter when you get into these fuzzy gray areas. And as Mr. Faber indicated, if the city wanted to, it might want to come up with reasons of health, safety, welfare to justify a prohibition upon the sale of cold beer in convenience stores and grocery stores. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. We've discussed this, we have a motion with a second. We will now vote. All of those in favor of the ordinance change?
Pardon me? It's the resolution.
The resolution, is that right? All those in favor of the resolutions, please raise your hand. Six. We have six votes in favor of the resolutions, and obviously we have one that's opposed to the resolution.
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, I think we have an ordinance also.
That's right.
A colleague from Ward Four, I wish to tender the ordinance.
Would you like to continue the ordinance?
Tender the ordinance. We just, we just voted on the resolution.
Right, right. I have it. Okay, Mayor and Board, the other issue to be brought up concerning this is the change in the ordinance itself. This is states an ordinance repealing ordinance number two thousand two dash oh seven of the City of Starkville, Oktibah County, Mississippi, as amended and adopting a new ordinance with proper rules and regulations for the sale of beer and light wine with an alcohol content of not more than five percent by weight. And Mr. Faber, is this, am I correct in that all this simply does is incorporate the resolution itself into the ordinance as far as not allowing the regulation of temperature?
Correct.
Okay.
Under section, what I believe is section seven, maybe. Could be section six, specifically deals with that. I'm sorry. Section.
Section five. So each of you have received this ordinance in your packet? I salute that he passed this ordinance as worded.
Second. We have a motion to approve the ordinance as worded. We have a second. Do we have any discussion?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, of course, I can repeat all of that previous discussion. If anyone, if anyone has forgotten, I'll be happy to do so. Oh, I would add further again, I'm at a loss to see what positive thing this does for the City of Starkville. And even more than that, there are considerations that have not even been talked about tonight when a municipality, and I've had experience with several in this very same situation, talks about the sale of cold beer. Usually there is consideration given to, well, are we gonna allow the sale of single containers? Or should it be purchased in some sort of package type of thing? In other words, do you get your fence posts by itself, or you got to buy enough of them? Do you get your court by itself, or you got to buy enough of them? Most cities go into discussions like that. One further thing that I did not mention, that I certainly would mention here, I am bothered a little bit about the haste with which this particular matter was brought forward. It appears unbeknownst to anyone on the agenda on Friday. Here it is Tuesday. A majority of this board ran, talking at length, about opportunity for citizen participation, public input, all these types of things. And we really have not had much opportunity for this tonight. Thus, I would like to amend the motion to take this ordinance under advisement until the next meeting to allow for sufficient citizen input and opinion into the matter.
Are you making a motion to amend?
That I am.
Do you have a second to the motion?
I've certainly taken a representative sample from, from Ward Five. And I've asked business owners, I've asked residents, and while I would feel comfortable voting on this tonight and feel like I'd be a good representative for my neighbors in Ward Five, I'm willing to allow for additional input. There was only one speaker here tonight, and that surprised me a little bit. And I'm willing to second the motion for those reasons.
We have a motion and a second to amend the ordinance. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Two, all those opposed, please raise your hand. Five, it fails. We are now ready to vote on the motion that has already been seconded. Amendment failed to this motion. There is no reason to restate the motion. All those in favor of the original motion for cold beer and the ordinance change, please raise your hand. Six, all those opposed? It passes. This brings us down to departmental business. The Electric Department has requested an approval of an electric rate increase as imposed by TBA. We put this on the agenda, I think all of you know that it's a six-point-five percent increase, is that correct?
No. No.
More than that. Where is it at? How much is it at?
Seven point seven four.
Seven point seven four percent increase. Not much we can do about it, but it is put on here for any discussion. Is there any discussion? This is a pass-through increase, is that correct?
No, it's not in terms of.
Really? What are you gonna do with all that money?
Six point, six percent of it is pass-through from TBA. TBA, with each contributor, every time they have a rate increase, which we did two years ago, they actually start a survey of the cost of operations for each department. And they're stating that our index number is approximately three, three hundred and four thousand dollars for cost of living, well, cost of operation from the last rate increase. And we're also asking for that, which comes to one point seven four percent. What this does, it actually takes in consideration price of gasoline, transformer oil, wire, costs, all of these have escalated since, over the last two years.
Any, all of them have any questions of if? If not, do I hear a motion that we approve the rate increase?
I just want clarification, so. How much is this is actually requested by TBA, and how much is requested by the City of Starkville? Starkville, like Chris?
TBA is actually asking about six percent. It comes to one million, six hundred, sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars that it actually delays in SED rates. And we're asking for three hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars as our index figure since, over two years ago.
And the index again was to go for cost of fuel and those types of things?
Cost of fuel, cost of transformers, cost of wire, all of these things have grown up in price over the last two years. TBA is asking for their increase due to increase in oil price, natural gas, coal, things of that sort for their generation, so.
Mr. Adaway, if we were, it sounds like we're somewhat stuck on the six percent that TBA is requesting from us. What flexibility do we have with this one point seven four? If, for example, we didn't approve that tonight, how would that impact operations at Starkville likely?
By not approving that, it's just gonna mean that we're gonna have to deal with it more, so, up the cost to the business.
Mr. Mayor, just for one follow comment to all of the cops. We think it may be a good idea on asking to approve the six percent TBA mandated increase and refer the one point seven four percent to the budget committee for its reviewing consideration and to be remunerated at a subsequent.
Do we have a second to that motion? That we immediately increase the six percent rate, but refer the other one point seven four percent to, or whatever it is. Yes, Ed?
Um, Mayor Kemp, I have to turn this into TBA pretty quick, and once we, you know, pass that deadline, that's it. This three hundred and seven thousand dollars, like I say, this is what TBA is projecting it's caused us over the last two years to do business. And we're bound to, we can survive, but it would, it would help tremendously in the cost of, of operations over the next two to three years.
Mr. Mayor, that was just only an inquiry coming to the chair.
Okay, no form of motion, all right.
Yes, I just wanted the chair's response to that.
Okay. Any other question from the all of them?
Mr. Adaway, just to understand that it sounds like there is a time pressure for us to, to provide feedback back to TBA. Can you give us a deadline, so for example, if we address this on our next recess meeting, is that in?
They notified me that last Friday, these figures were supposed to be in. There was no communication between us and them until a few days ago, when they were looking at me having those figures in. They've been more or less hidden on this since last October, but they voted, the full board voted in their July meeting to do these rate increases. And so it's really gonna, a hurry-up situation on our administration.
So do, I guess, are, do we have then the opportunity to more fully evaluate this and then provide a response?
No. No. Just be honest with you.
Mr. Mayor, do you have a recommendation? It's a very important matter, I'd like to hear from the mayor.
Well, heck, it's pretty clear. I mean, he says they put the qua overs on him, and that he needs a response, and apparently they have been delaying in regard to, say, getting you to respond. Is that not correct?
Correct.
And if we don't respond, then all we're getting is the six percent rate increase. And what he obviously is asking, that fuel costs have gone up, the cost of operations have gone up, and he's asking for a difference in the increase of operations over the last two years in order to, say, continue for the next two years. Is that not basically what you're doing?
Yes, sir.
And I understand Mr. Cox is concerned in that he doesn't feel like this has been presented to us in a time to fashion. And that he's seeking a little bit more time to, say, review the additional one point seven four percent or whatever it is on the saying, and the bottom line is, we don't have the time to review it. So what we are, we can improve, we can increase the six percent, or the six point whatever percent it is, and we can forego the other percent. And then when we look at, say, budget time on. And then, when we look at, say, budget time on funds that we get in lieu of taxes, instead of being $800,000 a year in the constitution, it may be a half a billion dollars a year. And I would strongly urge the board to approve the 7.74. Am I not on target on that, Mr.?
Yes.
So, you know, it's bottom line. Do you want $800,000 according to the general fund on a, in lieu of taxes, you want half a million dollars going to general fund? And since general fund's basically the fund, I think we could use just about any kind of constitution to it that we could give. I'm not on target with that. And so, do we have a motion that we approve this, this rate increase? Well, Mr. Hadaway, it looks like the TBA, you may not give, if we don't get any motion at all. Do we have a motion? Did you make a motion we approve the?
No, they're just an inquiry.
He was inquiring. We don't have a motion. You make the motion for it.
I was saying before, in Hadaway's first speaking, I thought there was already a motion waiting on second.
He had a inquiry, and I think that's all the motion, yeah. We don't have a motion on the floor. I, I think Alden Cox raised some issues about the, you know, the full increase.
So moved, 7.74%.
Is that right, Ed? 7.74%? Do we have a second to his motion?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. We have two opposed. That passes. Before we go into the executive session, I would like to go back to the consent agenda items. We have one item in which Mr. McLaurin asked to be removed as item 3A1, I believe, of the consent agenda. And I have one other item that I would like to do before that. We approved in the consent agenda three people for the firefighting positions, and I'd like to read their names out with the salary. Rebus Kellum for a salary of $24,585.72. Cedric Hogan for the same price, $24,585.72. And Charles Lafitte for the same price, $24,585.72. These were three certified firefighter's positions in which we hired in the consent agenda, and I failed to mention previously when we approved the consent agenda, these three particular individuals with their salary. Do I have a motion that we approve those three individuals with the salary?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion with a second. All those in favor, please say yes, sir. Raise your hand, okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. If you'll refer back to Roman numeral three. Item A1, the request authorization to advertise a hire and accounts payable hyphen deputy city clerk to the city clerk's office. And I open that to discussion.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I would ask that this be removed from the consent agenda to, again, to renew my point that we have, I think, too large a staff in the office of the city clerk, a larger staff than any other city our size, and indeed cities that are larger than Starkville. We have removed from the responsibilities of the city clerk's office tax collection. That goes to Octavio County and for which we pay a fee to the county. We have now removed from the city clerk's office the preparation of the minutes, the recording of the minutes, the transcribing of the minutes, the placement of minutes in the minute book. Two major functions of the city clerk's office have been removed, and of course, we are paying someone else to do that particular function. It just seems to me that we have too large a staff in the city clerk's office, and I again renew my request of the board that we take a look at the organization and operation of the municipal clerk's office relative to the need for personnel. I travel all over the state of Mississippi, visit virtually every city that exists, some 296, large and small, and have a very good feel for what occurs in the municipal clerk's office, as well as direction of the municipal clerk's certification program, which provides a three-year certification curriculum for municipal clerks and deputy clerks. We need to do everything we can to economize and save money, and personnel, of course, is the major cost that the city has.
Mr. Mayor, a very brief, I may say, few comments. I'm in favor of giving deference to our city clerk to operate and manage the city clerk's office. We hired the city clerk after lengthy discussion. We need to support her leadership. We discussed the city clerk's office and it has for a very lengthy and substantial time period. I am willing to continue to support Ms. Outlaw's leadership, her ability to lead that office and department. I'm willing to support this request on this agenda. It appears to me that she has done an exemplary job in operating the city clerk's office. And with that being said, I'd like to ask how Chief Administrative Officer, Ms. Miss Brode, has she had an opportunity to review this request, and as such, what is her recommendation?
In discussing this, Mr. Alden McLaurin, I understood from the, sort of, the spot reorganization we talked about at the last board meeting, and I understand his concern about the reorganization. I gave deference to the city clerk with Outlaw regarding her department at this point in time, because I hadn't gotten into it in some depth. And so, from that perspective, until we revisit the reorganization issue, I was deferring to her recognition of her work in the, in her department. So, I confess that I want to get into the reorganization, but was not there yet, and she felt like she needed the additional assistance.
Thank you, Ms. Brode. Mr. Mayor, I offer a motion to give full and complete authorization to advertise to hire an accounts payable slash deputy city clerk from the city clerk's office.
Second.
Do we have a motion with a second? We've had discussion of this. All those in favor of the motion?
I'd like to, pardon, I didn't see your hand up there. I'd like to propose an amendment to this, that we go ahead and take this issue under advisement. This has been talked about frequently. We need to resolve the issue, and I would recommend, and will do so in the form of a motion at the appropriate time, that we go ahead and establish an operations and organization committee. We're talking about many of these issues in the Budget Committee now. Of course, we had some recent reorganization at the last meeting, as well as we hired a CAO who is very keenly interested in how we provide our services to the community. We need to provide a vehicle and some, and some authorization to, to take in an overall look at the organization and the alignment of our city resources. So, I'd recommend that we roll this into a, to a discussion around operations and organization and establish a committee that would have the mayor serve ex officio, of course, as CAO. I'll be happy to sort of own that for Mr. McLaurin, Mr. Perkins, who seem to have most of that experience and knowledge about what's happened before and then what should happen going forward.
Mr. Mayor, I have no objection to considering a separate motion offered by my colleague for Ward Five, but I do not want to roll this matter that's before us into that motion, because I know what's gonna happen to it once we get into it. You may not see the life, the breadth outside the committee. Now, again, we have for years just given deference to hiring staff for our department here. This is a budget to position, is that correct, Ms. Outlaw?
Yes.
And it's vacant? And it's just, not just a routine thing that we do before this year and forward. So, let's go ahead and pass this motion.
Let's, uh, go ahead.
Let's go ahead and pass this motion, or let's take any motion for reorganization subsequent to the passage of this motion.
Well, you made a motion to amend your motion, and first of all, do we have a second to the amendment?
I would second the motion.
Are we have a motion that, to amend the original motion? We do have a second. We've heard the debate. All those in favor of amending the original motion, please raise your hand.
What exactly is the amendment?
The amendment is to form another committee.
Would you take this under advisement?
And take all this under advisement, and look at it, and study it, and chew on it, spit it back out and everything.
And resolve.
And we have a motion to amend the original motion. The original motion is to hire this person for that position that is presently vacant. Does that clarify? All those in favor of the amendment to the original motion, raise your hands. Three, all those opposed? Your amendment fails, gentlemen. We're back to the original motion is that is to fill the position in the city clerk's office.
Adapt.
As advertised. That we have a motion? I don't know that we ever had a second to that motion, you know?
I seconded it.
Of course, you did say, you did second it, okay. All those in favor of the original motion, please show by raising your hand. All those opposed? Please see, you've just been outvoted all night.
Oh, not all night, mate. Let me go ahead and take the time to make a formal motion to establish an operations and organization committee that would review the overall organization and alignment of city resources, with, of course, the focus being on providing services in the most efficient and effective way. I'd like to see the mayor, serve ex officio, CAO, Alden McLaurin, Alden Perkins, and myself on that committee.
We have a motion. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
We have a motion with a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Is the CAO ex officio as well?
Yes.
All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Six, everybody vote for it, okay, that passes. It brings us down to the executive session, in which we have two matters to go into the executive session. First would be the discussion of a mosquito control program, and the second item would be a personnel matter with a discussion of the performance of the city attorney.
Mayor?
Yes.
How move do we go to close the executive session?
Do we have a second?
I second the motion to go to the closing.
All right, we have a motion. Alright, we have a motion.